We could talk about a little bit. Can you hear me? Yes. I call the order. Meeting of Johnson County Council for May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Call for a roll, please.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. We have a quorum. All right, Mr. Dear, would you lead us in an indication, please?
Bow with me if you choose. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be true servants of the community and to use our knowledge and experience to to help do what's good for the community. We also ask that you watch over all of our people in the county as they recover from the your recent tornado actions that took place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If you're able, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
All right, we have some changes to the agenda. What I need to do is remove item B one. And also item C two. So B one, we're moving, moving to the next meeting, and then item C two. That that is removed. Remove the agenda. Adding one item is the interlocal agreement under E one point five. And that's between Indiana and Johnson County. Concerning installation of a casing under I sixty-nine. All right, so the next matter of business is, or I'm sorry. Public comments. Call for public comments at this point in time. Do we have any?
No approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda. Take a motion, please.
I'll make the first motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Melinda Greasmer, second by John Ditmers. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All right. Now on to public comments. Do we have any public comments at this time? And if so, limited to five minutes per person. Hearing none, we'll move forward. All right, regarding item B, this is the area of the meeting we take for those reductions and transfers or any items listed on the consent agenda that may be removed by a council member and moved to the regular agenda. So counsel, are there any items that you want to move to their regular agenda, or if that is heard, then I'd offer, I'd take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Dear, second by Ms. Greasmer. A discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda is item C one, which is Priest Child Diversion Program, Fund Number twenty-five oh nine.
What happened for you guys working faster than I thought you were going to? It's discretionary money. We're putting this in for a deputy prosecutor who is going to be supervising that court. Nothing coming out of the general fund. We just asked to be able to move that in there.
I'm sorry, Lance, the role is what? Is it a new, is it a new position?
No, it's a person who's in a position who's going to be supervising the the prosecutors in that court, and it's to bring that salary to make commensurate with the responsibility. So it's just a supplement to a salary for a supervisor.
Any other questions? Any, any further discussion?
Who's in that position right now?
You know, I'm terrible with names. Hang on just a second. His name is Brian Smith. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Brian Smith.
Brian Smith.
Yeah, that's the one thing that gives me a panic is when somebody asks the name and I'm like, wait, hang on.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. Fair question.
Lance, I realize it's not coming out of the general fund, but the rationale for the need right now, kind of mid-cycle on a budget, budget cycle is what?
This is what, this is what the diversion program was created to do is to give prosecutors discretionary money so they can, and this person is underpaid as compared to the other people with his that work at his level, and he is going to be the supervisor in that court.
So this is why, true him up, basically.
Yes, basically, that's what it is. Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Burton, go ahead.
Just curious, who was the supervisor prior to him?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Supervisor prior to Mr. Smith was who?
I asked him to supervise that court.
But prior to him, who was supervising the court?
They didn't have a supervisor. It would just be me.
So it has, it is a new position then since?
Making that a supervisor, yes.
So bringing this would bring Brian up to what was the amount?
About somewhere around ninety.
Okay, I'd like to speak in favor of this. And for the reason that I truly believe we need to trust in our elected officials and our department heads in providing us with the information and in determining what their needs are. And I also agree with Counselor Ditmers that midstream, it's really hard to make these decisions. However, there's, you know, a need here, and those are the two things that we have decided as a council to do if there's an emergency, or if there's a, an opportunity to make a wrong right, then I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Was not questioning the judgment with my line of question, by the way.
And I'm sorry if I implied that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, have a motion by Melinda Greasmer.
Yes.
Motion by Melinda Greasmer for item C one, A and B. A second by Counselor Ditmers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay. And I'd like to further explain, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Just that, you know, I've stuck to my, my pledge that mid, you know, mid-budget raises out of nowhere without any, in my opinion, emergency reasons, I would have to be voting no to keep my word to the other departments. So the only thing I know about this is what I heard this evening. So I understand it's going to pass, but I'm going to have to vote no.
I appreciate the sentiment. I mean, I agree. This stuff should be handled at budget year, but this is going to be me, so.
All right, any further discussion? The motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is item C three for Superior Court Number Three. Hello, Your Honor.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
I'm Doug Cummins with Johnson County Superior Court Three. I can probably answer some of your questions right off the bat, so I appreciate you hearing the motion for our public defender funds. I realize it is midstream, that it is not budget time. It was an odd kind of conglomeration of events that brought us here today. As you know, Judge Hammer left the bench last year. The minute you file, you can no longer hear cases, so it was kind of a, the minute he filed that paperwork, that stopped his process. So kind of caught everybody off guard. We did have a pro tem, Senior Judge Pro Tem, which was Judge Eggers. Andrew Eggers is my public defender in that court, my felony public defender. So that created some conflict. And then, as you know, Drew Eggers last year had some medical issues. So we were paying public defenders kind of piecemeal. So we had three or four different public defenders that we were paying to cover that kind of interim space. I got there in June. As you know, I was here last year because we had some trials backed up. We had some jury expenses. We had the extra public defender expense. So I realize that I'm here midstream, but it's taken me to this point to get the numbers together to see whether or not I needed to ask for one. We have two misdemeanor public defenders in the court. They are carrying as big a caseload as they can. For those of you that don't know, Superior Court Three is all criminal. That's all we do. We had almost eighteen hundred cases last year between felonies and misdemeanors. When Drew finally got the information together for me and I looked at our numbers, our felony numbers were almost five hundred felonies last year. There's no place for me to push off additional cases. My public defenders are all about maxed out where they can be. And Drew actually has more than is recommended according to the ABA. For those of you that have been around a little bit, we had a big to-do about the public defenders kind of in general last year. So I understand that the appropriation is midstream, and it is a general fund request, but it's cheaper than a public defender agency, and I just have no place else to put the defendants we have. Coming out of COVID, we have an extraordinary amount of people that either remain unemployed or coming out of that, and the ones that are incarcerated. I really can't do anything except the point of public defender. We do have public defender hearings for those that are not incarcerated, so that I can check to make sure they qualify. We do impose public defender funds to help supplement when the case is over. And I was going to say something else. I can't forget what it was. So I remember names, but I had one more point I was going to make, and I don't remember what that was. But there was a period of time when our misdemeanor public defenders were taking a portion of the felonies. They were taking the driving cases. One of our misdemeanor public defenders took felony operating while intoxicated, and one took felony driving while suspended. That's just not the makeup of the crimes right now. They're all drug-related. And with their caseloads, I simply cannot give them any more cases than they have. So I'm kind of at that point where he needs some help in order to avoid problems in the future.
You mentioned something about a public defender agency. What was?
That was back when the lawsuit was coming around. The bigger counties have those. It's set up like the prosecutor's office, so for us to do one would require a building, a chief, they would be statutorily paid, which is a bigger number than we pay our public defenders on contract. It's a big, it's a mess, and it's expensive if you get to that point. We don't, I don't know that we're big enough to do that yet, but I know that my felony PD is, needs some help. It would help me get people out of jail quicker. I think the jail right now is forty-five dollars a day. DOC is about sixty-five. We also add that, the other thing I was going to tell you is that we on a, every Monday have collection hearings for court cost and public defender fees. So I am doing everything I can to bring money into the county, but I can't do it with the people I have.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you calling, everybody, too. And for asking me and to talk to me, and I thought, I thought this was a this was a prime example. For the reason, the reason I latched onto this is being for it and for this additional appropriation is that you're moving people through the system faster.
As quick as I can.
And that's, that's good because they're not languishing in our jail. And you mentioned forty-five dollars a day. I'd be willing to bet that it costs us more money than forty-five dollars a day. So as far as a council goes, that's, that's a good move. And I don't know what that number is exactly, but I can, I can imagine that it's dependent on how quickly you move them through. It's probably paying for itself, and then it's providing a service that's, that's needed.
I can tell you that when I got there in June and, and no disrespect to Judge Hamner when he was on the bench. It was right during the COVID time. Courts were hard to get into. It was hard to do trials. But when I first took the bench back in June, it was not unusual for us to have a Wednesday and a Thursday, which is our misdemeanor and felony days, where all the cases that I were hearing were two years old. It is unusual now when we have a day when a case is older than a year, because that's kind of the deadline that I've set for everybody. So it does take, especially on the bigger cases, it takes guys a while to sit in jail and realize that they're going to spend some time in DOC. It's a, just a mental adjustment that kind of has to happen. So I have shortened the timeframe, but I can't continue to do it with the numbers we've got and the public defenders I have.
All right, further discussion?
One more question. This is a capacity issue. You've got more work coming in than you can handle, I'm hearing. With this new role, then will you have some headroom in that capacity? You don't want this not something you want to grow, but if it does, do you have a sense for how much more you can take with this role? Will it do, will handle this for a while, or is it going to be a short-term fix?
It will, it will hold us for a while. Part of that is, is something that I just simply can't answer right now because we're still in the process of clearing out the kind of older COVID cases. I've got a case that's set for trial in August that's actually three years old.
So to that point, part of us backlog.
Part of it is backlog.
Okay.
Part of it, though, if we're going to run five hundred felonies a year, I'm going to need two people to handle it regardless. I don't foresee a third one at any point in the near future. I think the two of them can handle it once we get the caseload back to some manageable numbers. But yes, part of it is just, we're still trying to clear out some older cases, but we've done a lot of that. We were actually, last year, my court, we ran a spreadsheet from January first to October of last year, and the projection was that my court was going to be up thirty-five percent on felonies for that year. That was last year. And so.
So this is for two, two public defender?
It's a single additional one. I would actually have four total in there, two that handle misdemeanors and two that handle felonies. So yes.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Anybody have anything?
Yes, I do, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to say that I also appreciate Judge calling everyone and giving us the information, and I did, I took the numbers that you gave me, and I did personally run those. And that was the number I came up with, with the average of a hundred and twenty cases. And we're in that office currently carrying a hundred and sixty-eight. I know you were new at budget time last time because of the restructuring and people changing positions and, and the restructuring of a lot of our judicial areas. So contrary to me sticking to my guns on not doing this stuff in, in, you know, middle of logging, I, I will say to you, thank you for having your numbers together, and I, this is something I can support because I do see it as an emergency status and maybe a little bit of oversight last year because of the changing of office and, and that type of thing. So I understand completely. So I do believe I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And part of that's on me. I just didn't have the information I needed to make a, an actual pitch, and I don't want to come in and ask for money I don't need. I didn't have the information available last year when I took over to say at budget time, I can't do it this way. So my apologies for that, for the part of it, it's mine.
No apology required.
No. I'll make a motion if you're ready for one, Mr. President.
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve. The request is presented.
Motion by Pam Burton.
And I'll make a second motion.
Second by Melinda Greasmer. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank, Pam, will you share your drink there with us sometime in the future?
Oh, you can see that. Do you see the beautiful skies? We just had a helicopter.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty well staged. All right, so the next item on the agenda is item C four.
Commissioner Walls.
Yeah. Commissioner Walls. Bueller. Hi, Mr. Commissioner.
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. What did you have?
You're asking.
Sorry, I was out here.
ARPA.
Oh.
You're up for, I mean, C four for the American Rescue Plan, number eighty-nine fifty, Health Department and Coroner Facility.
Yep, this is what the numbers are, six point five million. You've got like right at six million for the construction, and you've got a half a million dollars we put in contingency for this project. So, and this is passed through the ARPA Committee, passed through the Commissioners, and now it's for your final adoption tonight, if you so choose.
Ron, would you like to speak to this?
I was present at the meeting.
Well, I'll speak in support of it, I think is well-vetted by the ARPA Committee.
The, oh, I think we had five bids, and I think there was only maybe two hundred thousand dollars spreading out over five bids. So we got the real numbers.
Yeah, very tight bids.
It was tightest I've seen in a long time, so.
And that's a credit due to the people who prepared the documents.
Yeah, they did a good job, so.
Weren't any hidden questions, so. I would be in favor of this. And as I'm on the ARPA Committee with the Commissioners, Ron, and Mr. Ditmers.
Move to approve. Member.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by John Ditmers, second by Ron Dear. Any further discussion?
Question, what, what's the fund balance in, in the ARPA? What's available? Do you know that off the top of your?
I defer to Adam on that one.
It's, between the two tranches of funds, we call them the regulatory use in the discretionary bucket, we've got approximately seventeen million in unexpended. Thank you.
There's some earmarked that hadn't been used, or some, it's, it's kind of a moving target.
Is unexpended, uncommitted? Or is it committed, not spent yet?
A little bit of both. The, the large ones are unappropriated dollar amounts would be this project at six point five. The other one's the mental health facility, which we go out to bed with it to June, I believe. So we'll know that here in a few weeks on what that project's going to, going to cost. From an unappropriated standpoint, we've got right at about a million left in the, in the discretionary amounts.
So any further discussion, any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You already had a motion.
John, I'm sorry, John. Motion from John Ditmers. I'll second the motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. Ron, dear, for a second, any additional discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is item D one, Approval of Ordinance twenty-two-three dash oh two. This is an ordinance regarding an additional appropriation by White River Township Fire Protection District. Fund number eighty-six oh three, Special Fire General Fund, capital allies, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and zero cents. Hello, Jeremy.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. I'm doing fine. How are you?
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Jeremy Powell. I'm chief of the White River Township Fire Department, and
Yeah, Ben Riker, the financial consultant for the department.
Mike Hoffman, Community Laser.
Mike.
What we're doing this evening is we're asking for the council's approval for an appropriation for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a building that would meet the needs of White River Township for maintenance, training, and storage facility. So the department has needed this for at, at least the last four years. And looking at how we prioritize public safety in White River Township, obviously, having the personnel and the equipment to respond is the number one priority. And we have made great progress in that and decided that the, the construction of a building for maintenance just was not the highest priority at, at the moment. What brings me here tonight is that the Harrison Township Volunteer Fire Corporation has a fire station, and it's located in close proximity to the district, and they're willing to sell it to us to use for maintenance, training, and a storage facility. It is much, much less expensive than had we acquired property or built a building, and it'll allow us to meet the needs of our community, and it will also allow us to support our mutual aid partners, which Barger'sville being one that contracts fire and EMS services to that district. So I would ask your approval for the additional appropriation for just that, that building.
Okay, I've got a question. So is this building going to be shared with what other fire departments?
The building will be owned by the district, and I have had conversations with Barger'sville, who provides services, and I've also talked to some Warren County officials and one of the board members for Harrison Township Corporation. So obviously, we would have to do MOUs and work out agreements with them, but this is the community's fire department. It is, it is a building that was funded through grants and, and tax funds, and the former fire chief has offered to sell it to White River Township and no one else. So my goal, it number one is to meet the needs of White River Township citizens, and number two, to maintain that structure for that building for public safety needs in that community.
If I understand correctly, though, the documents I was reading was that you're asking for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the taxpayers to pay for this building, but any point in time, our county wants to change the use of the building, then the prior owner can step in and dictate something about it? Am I misunderstanding something?
I, I can clarify a couple points in there. First of all, we are paying for this from cash balances, and those cash balances came from a one point five million dollar reimbursement for COVID responses. So that's where the money's coming from. And then the, the point that you're talking about is the current owner is the Volunteer Fire Corporation of Harrison Township, and they have asked for right of first refusal. And our legal counsel is working on that with him.
What, a right of first refusal? Give me a scenario.
If, if the fire district wanted to sell it, he wants the opportunity to buy it back?
Oh, he wants to buy it back?
I don't envision that scenario, but that's one of the options.
Why is he selling it to us then if he wants to possibly buy it back?
I'm sorry, ask a question again, please.
Why is he selling it if he wants the opportunity to buy it back?
It belongs to the Volunteer Fire Corporation, and the Harrison Township Fire District no longer contracts with the Harrison Township Volunteer Corporation. So they have this building that they can't do anything with, and Barger'sville Fire Department provides the fire and EMS services for that fire district now.
So it's just a matter of a right to, a right to first refusal. It's not dictating to our county that we can't use it for another purpose.
Oh, you are absolutely right. That is a, that's a perfect explanation. If it's not used for public safety, he just wants the ability to buy it back.
So Jeremy, can you tell us, you know, some some really good points? So Jeremy, can you tell us, you know, some, some really good points about this? What it does for you, what it does for the area in regards to fire service, maintenance? Can you just specifically, what, what would be the top three things that it does for you?
What we've been doing for the last several years is sending our fire trucks out. And my concern as a fire chief that plans public safety is that takes additional time. So you have to drive it to another location. You have to wait for their schedule and then you have to hope they get it done in time and you have to go pick it up and drive it back. So the number one priority for me is to have a facility that we can drive the fire truck to and fix it hopefully that day or the next day. So keeping those trucks in service more frequently gives us the best ability to show up at the right time at the right place to save somebody's life. So that's an efficient use of repairing fire trucks. It also gives us space for our training props and to conduct practical training as well as classroom training. And the third point I would say is this has been a need for four years. And like so many other projects in the county, it is inevitable. It must be done. And it would cost about seven point two million dollars to build this building if we had, if the county had to start from scratch. So this is bigger than just White River Township Fire Department. The, this is about securing infrastructure that will position us to protect this community for the next fifty years. Um, operationally, we don't have plans to hire and staff it. But operationally, it makes sense for Johnson County to have a public safety presence on the west side of the interstate. You can imagine what happens if we have a hazmat incident at one of these interchanges and every single Johnson County fire station is on the east side of the interstate.
Right, and on the other side of that is a river.
On the other side, that is a river, yes.
So it's almost an island.
Yes.
In, in regards to service.
Yes.
That's the one thing I noticed.
And we're getting this for a fraction of what this building's worth. And I, I, I would, I would contend that the need for the infrastructure is nearly without debate and I would rather buy it for this purchase price than find out the county's gotta build it at seven point two million dollars and that. I, where I got that number is that building's twenty-two thousand square feet and that was the twenty eighteen square foot cost to build our current fifty threes. So we couldn't even build it for seven point two million now. So this captures, this captures infrastructure that will serve the needs of Johnson County. And, and the portion of Morgan County that Bargersville protects, it'll do it for a fraction of the cost and ultimately it's a public safety need that serves our citizens. And I, I think it does it in an extremely fiscally responsible way.
So could we hear from your financial counsel?
Absolutely.
And as I understand, we're appropriating these funds and you already have the money.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, could you explain a little bit how it affects you?
Um, well, essentially what happened is we were funding a lot of expenses with, with the COVID-related items. And so we came across a theme of reimbursements, about one point five million dollars, kind of to cover expenses we already had. So that money's available then, so we're using these cash reserves then to fund the purchase of this building.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything to add? Jeremy, is the building being used now or is it vacant?
It's not being, it's not being used. Uh, it's not completely vacant. But the, the township, by the former Volunteer Fire Department, just.
It's not in, it's not in service.
It's not in service. No, they, they have some equipment in there. They've got an office in there. The Volunteer Corporation can go in and have meetings and conduct business, but it is, if you're asking if it's being used for public safety, it's not being used for public safety.
So is the nine fifty the purchase price?
We're still negotiating with them. The purchase price for the station is eight fifty. We're negotiating on about a one acre plot with a small house on it that would give us a house to practice on, which is, I mean, that's our primary response is a single-story residence, so we could pull lines through it. But the other purpose is that it has the easement access to the backside of this fire station. And this, this station is a little bit unusual. It was built into the side of a hill. So it's hardened against, uh, almost anything, but specifically against a tornado. And if we don't buy the, the house and the drive easement to get around the side of it, we, we can't drive around it and it would be a little difficult to get to the back and the top of that station.
What kind of cost is there improvement-wise to bring it up to speed as far as use from your perspective?
It can be used immediately for our needs. The portion of the building that hasn't been finished out is the living quarters upstairs. And the estimate to finish those living quarters is about a hundred thousand dollars. Most of the supplies are there. Being a volunteer fire department, there wasn't a need for them to completely finish the kitchen and the bedrooms and.
Is that going to be delayed or is that accounted for now some way as far as your plan?
Both. I, I would say it's delayed until we actually have a need for a functional living quarters and a response fire station. But we would have some funds in this nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we could get started on it and that we could perform. There's going to be some maintenance items anytime that you buy a building. You're going to have some routine maintenance items that you want to go through, like ensuring that the furnace and air conditioner has been inspected, et cetera. Thanks.
Okay, Pam, you have anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you. I have a complete understanding. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three twenty-two, an ordinance regarding additional appropriation by White River Township Fire Department District, uh, special fire front cap outlays nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion by Counselor Dear. I'll second. So motion by Counselor Dear, second by Counselor Myers. Any further discussion?
What is in a roll call by?
Oh, roll call. Okay, but any further discussion this time? They call for the roll call, please.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ordinance passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to do good things with this.
Smart move. All right, next on the agenda is item D two, Johnson County Public Library. Hello, tornadoes keeping away from them?
I've been busy. I'll tell ya. Good evening. I'm Lisa Whitner, the Johnson County Public Library Director, and I'm here for our twenty twenty-two year in review to tell you about all the wonderful things we've been doing in the past year. Uh, so included in your little packet there is our monthly, our quarterly program guide for the summer. Lots of great programs coming up this summer. It also includes our year in review infographic and then a, the yellow sheet is upcoming programs of interest. I will note that our authors at JCPL, the Jack Carr, uh, his visit is sold out at the Art Craft, so unfortunately we don't have any more tickets for that, um, but that'll be a great program uh, that we're hosting at the Art Craft. Uh, so I'm just wanting to share some of our highlights of last year. Our banner, a banner year of improvements. We opened the Clark Pleasant Branch Library and, uh, some other things that we continue to be proud of is our high circulation of materials. We continue to circulate more than a million items at JCPL. And we also, uh, make a difference connecting our residents with resources and learning opportunities. Uh, we updated the early childhood learning areas at the White River Branch and the Franklin Branch, and we're going to embark in a much bigger uh, renovation for early childhood learning at the Trafalgar Branch this year. It'll be more of an experience kind of like what you see at the new Clark Pleasant Branch. It's a place where kids can prepare for kindergarten, so we're excited for that. We got a grant from the Brimigan Foundation for, for us to be able to do that. Some more highlights. We resumed our storytimes at Bargersville Town Hall. We hosted Read to Me Jamboree last year, which is, was an early childhood learning festival. We joined the Indiana State Library, uh, ebook consortium. It's called Overdrive. You use the Libby app with your library card and you have access to hundreds of thousands of more ebooks and audiobooks uh, that we already, that we already provide to our residents. We also collaborated with Johnson County Community Foundation, Aspire Johnson County and, and many other, uh, agencies to provide the Great Arts Quest last summer. It was a scavenger hunt to look and search for public art all throughout the county. Uh, currently, we are working on a feasibility study to look at possible improvements at the White River Branch and the Franklin Branch, uh, in the, in the next several years. Uh, we've been holding community visioning sessions about that. We had one last week, really well-attended, the White River Branch, and then on May eighteenth, which is a Thursday at seven PM, uh, at the Franklin Branch, we'll be hosting another community input session regarding those two locations. And, uh, as of today, the improvements we want to do at those locations will be exactly where they are located. We do not have plans to relocate either of those, uh, branches. Just want to provide you the little update about the tornado damage of the Clark Pleasant Branch. Uh, we did have to close for about a week and we opened, um, the next Saturday after the tornado to the public. When you drive by the branch, you still see some broken windows and things like that. Uh, most of the damage was cosmetic. Um, we did, we did receive a lot of damage, but luckily nothing to the, uh, inside of the collection or, um, a few pieces of furniture were ruined. Um, and we had some damage to like the outside structure, which I think will probably take us six to eight months to get, uh, completely back, back to its original, um, condition. So, um, we fared a lot better than a lot of, uh, other homes in the area, uh, and other businesses, so we're very grateful. Um, and we're very grateful for both the county sheriff department and the, and all the public safety teams that helped provide, uh, just resources and, uh, communication with us after, after the tornado. Um, so I'm here. If you have any questions about the library, I'm happy to answer them. And then for anybody, uh, attending today, I have a few extra program guides that we'd like some.
Good job, Lisa. Um, Art, do you have any on the radar, and I know it's out there a ways, that any capital improvement projects that you might be thinking about or?
So the only, the only thing we're doing, the feasibility study for White River and for Clark Pleasant, I'm sorry, White River and Franklin Branch. Uh, we'll be working on that for the next several months, probably at least six months. Um, and then, and then we'll be kind of working through the different scenarios and, uh, possible options that we could do for improvements at those two locations. And I would say the earliest we would come to the, to the council for any kind of approval would probably be late twenty twenty-four. Uh, and that would be for the White River Branch first. Uh, and then several years down the line, we would, uh, come back again for some improvements to the Franklin Branch, but that's really like the next sort of four to fifteen years.
What are you thinking about capital improvement for the White River?
So White River Branch, um, you know, has just exploded in population since we built it in nineteen eighty-seven. So, and we have about three and a half acres of land behind the current location. So there's a couple of things that we're thinking about. Uh, one is expanding that location to fit the needs of the community of unincorporated Johnson County on the northwest side of Johnson County, and we're also thinking of moving some non-public services from the Franklin Branch to the White River Branch because there's actually more room, uh, to grow at White River. That would allow when we would do some renovations at Franklin Branch where it sits, it would allow for more space for the public. So those are right now and then better visibility, um, because many people don't know we're right off of Smith Valley and one thirty-five.
You looking at any potential satellite, uh, Bargersville area?
So we have been thinking about Bargersville and we talked to a lot of folks in Bargersville, stakeholders and, uh, officials about that. Right now, um, July, at the end of July, we're getting a bookmobile. And for now, we're going to service Bargersville area with a bookmobile, uh, and the outreach that we're currently doing, uh, to, to different, uh, organizations and places. But we're going to have a bookmobile scheduled that will serve the Bargersville area until really we can find out where the population is going to go in the next several years. I don't think right now is the right time for a branch. Um, but, uh, we, we are still considering ways to serve the Bargersville community.
Okay, Lisa, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or? Pam, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, next up and item E one, and we're adding an item here to the agenda, E one point five also, so highway. That E one point five is the interlocal agreement. Hi, Daniel.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Daniel Johnston, highway engineer and, uh, here to, uh, talk, talk with you, uh, or discuss, um, kind of what I sent out to the council, uh, here a couple of weeks ago, a memo, um, kind of identifying, uh, really two things that we're considering, uh, in regards to our, uh, engineering staff in the highway department. Uh, now that I've been here as the highway engineer for a little bit, I think about fifteen months, um, I've been through a whole year, uh, all the different weather seasons, our different, uh, operational, uh, seasons, identifying what it is that we do, what it is that our staff does. We do have some vacant positions right now and trying to identify the best organization for, for those staff. Um, after a number of discussions, uh, we don't anticipate making any major, uh, changes. I think what's ideal, what would be ideal for us is to take one of our positions and slightly tweak, tweak the title, but also tweak the responsibilities and the duties to really focus on one aspect of that position that we see is increasing. Uh, I'm sorry if you can't hear me. Uh, one aspect of that position that we see has a lot of potential to increase as Johnson County continues to grow. Uh, that being managing, uh, permits, permit applications. Uh, we get about five hundred permit applications per year. Uh, that could be anything from utility companies working in the right of way, uh, to public citizens or private citizens that want to, uh, re-expand their driveway or maybe they've purchased a property, they want to add a new driveway, that, that would be a permit application. Uh, it could be a major commercial, uh, driveway or a, an entrance into a new residential subdivision, that kind of thing. So we have about five hundred, uh, per year. And typically that, uh, review, I guess, the, the in-processing review of, of those is done by one of our engineering technician positions. Uh, and so recognizing how this, that role or that responsibility, uh, could, could increase. Envisioning changing that to, instead of engineering technician, uh, changing that to become an engineering permit technician. Uh, we have two engineering technician positions right now. And so the person, the employee that would be best suited for this position would be the, of the two, uh, the individual that has the most experienced, uh, most experience dealing with contractors, most experience, uh, communicating back and forth with utility companies, developers, private citizens. Um, a little, a more experience, uh, in terms of understanding construction techniques, constructability, able to think about how, uh, the work involved in the, in the particular permit, uh, would could be constructed. Be able to identify any potential issues, uh, associated with those permits. This role would still maintain some of those core engineering technician roles while, there's always the potential this individual could, uh, be asked to go, go. Be asked to go, go perform a site distance, uh, site distance investigation at a at a new driveway location. Uh, potentially in place, some of our traffic counters, so that it's it's not a complete change. It's just more of an emphasis and a recognition of this, at the aspect of permits uh for this role. We're working on uh acquiring some software that's going to increase our own kind of internal efficiency. And how we receive the permits, online submittals, that kind of thing, also able to track documents, a little easier communication uh with the applicants. Hope, we hope to eventually get to a point where we can do some online payments. We're working, working through that. Uh, but we think there's a lot of benefit to uh certainly the the online software that uh. That we're hoping, hoping to use. So that is is one of the particular uh changes that we're kind of envisioning. And really just, I don't have any uh numbers at this time in terms of salaries or whatever. The goal would certainly be uh to stay within line, within what we already have in the budget. Uh, for this aspect of of changing this, this change from engineering technician to engineering permit technician for this one position. So that's, that's one aspect uh of what we've been considering. The second one is more of a uh broad opportunity within the engineering staff. Uh, more of a development opportunity. The the state NDOT has a well-developed, uh, they call it their certified technician program. Uh, it's a series of six tests uh that construction inspectors. Or or any construction staff, I believe, uh, can take uh to then become certified. Uh, gives them additional responsibilities on the job site. It demonstrates their familiarity with. Uh, construction techniques, uh, plans, NDOT specifications and or standard specifications, NDOT standard drawings. Uh, there's a lot of benefit. It's it's a, it, since we as the highway department. Uh, make reference to NDOT standard specifications and standard drawings. To have our staff more familiar with that information uh stands to benefit us. When we're inspecting our own projects. And stands to benefit uh the the employee by having, by increasing their skills and abilities as well. I would envision of the six, of the six uh different tests. Uh, that it's not necessary for our physicians to take all six tests. We don't do a lot of bridge construction, for example. Uh, so that would be more appropriate for, of the four positions, we have two, our senior, our senior designer and our engineering designer. I could envision those individuals taking or participating in the bridge. Uh, but this uh engineering technician and the engineering permit technician that I'd mentioned. Uh, there's a couple of courses that are more common, for example, construction earthworks. Uh, hot mix asphalt paving, that's, that's really in our wheelhouse of what we do as a department. And so there'd be a lot of benefit for those staff to to have that testing and to pass those exams as well. So our intent is to incentivize our staff to take these tests. There is a cost involved. Um, to take the, to take the exam. It's a computer exam, NDOT, uh, host that. It's a, it's possible to register online and they have a central testing facility where it would be taken. That aspect would be paid through our department's training and te- uh, training and conference line item. One aspect that we're considering though, and we've reached out to a couple of consultant firms and municipalities to see how they handle it. This type of, if they have a type of program like this uh for their internal staff. Uh, would be to, as as these, as our staff pass these exams. Uh, to potentially come back to the council and ask for some sort of a salary bump, a minor salary bump. I guess, with with each exam. Now, I don't have any numbers of what that might be at at this time. Uh, certainly hope that um by the budget time, I'd be able to present kind of a better idea of what that uh might be. But just want an opportunity tonight to give all of you uh an idea of what we've been looking at. For kind of these two aspects, the, this position for engineering permit technician. And then this potential kind of a internal staff development opportunity.
I've got a question. Are you putting something in place for people who get their certification through the county that they remain working with the county? We don't want people leaving us.
No, it's a very valid concern and I'm I'm sure that would be part of the. I can, yes, the, the, the agreement, I guess.
Well, I'd like to commend you for getting the information out to us early. This isn't speaking to the impact on your department, but I'll proceed, a discussion that we're having. Continuously uh throughout the entire county, that what you're talking about is creating two new positions. Is that correct?
Uh, no, this would, this would not be um creating any new positions. It would, it would take one of our current positions. And change the title, but kind of emphasize some of the job responsibilities and job duties uh that it already has.
Okay, I understand. So, uh, and again, other departments are looking to change titles. And you know, we're discussing the process of how do we go about having a. A routine process to go through. So it feeds into what we're discussing. The other item that uh you had there that I thought was interesting, and you said you were reaching out. To other municipalities and consultants to find out what kind of step improvements they give to their employees as they take these different exams. So that they would be at a base salary, however that was determined. And then if they got one, they get an additional whatever, and if they got two, they get additional ever that, whatever, that's what you're talking about, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the information we're trying to to gather, how they handle it and what would work best for for us, for our staff.
I'm just curious, how many people are in your department?
Five total, including myself. So we have my, my role as the engineer, highway engineer. Uh, we have the senior designer. Uh, next is a uh engineering designer and then currently as their, as their title, uh, two engineering technician positions.
So Daniel, it feels like this is a precursor to an ask next month. Is it going to, I I think, right? Or or whenever, um, i- is it going to be, uh, it's basically a request to restructure the five you have. No new F T Es, any salary changes that you anticipate? Inside the the change?
So for the, I would anticipate there would be a salary change for this role, the engineering permit technician. But I don't think the total combined would change from what it is right now.
Essentially, you're restructuring and absorbing it all within the confines, if you will, of the. Budget structure, right?
I, I guess so, yes.
I mean, I, I don't take that very well, but.
It's.
So would that be with the exception of your certification process?
Correct, they would be, they would be different. So I, just the job title and emphasis for the engineering permit technician. Uh, that I think can be handled within uh the salary budgets that have, that we currently have. Uh, the testing uh as, as, as each employee, as they pass an exam. I I would potentially like the opportunity to come back and request a salary bump. For that employee for passing that exam. I don't have any information of what that number might be at this time, but.
Right.
So.
So do you think it'll go until budget time that we'll be having this discussion or is it gonna be sooner?
Um, I would anticipate probably budget time.
Okay.
Not, yeah, not next month or.
Okay, that's, yeah. I I made that presumption. So if it's heading out to budget, then this makes a lot of sense. If it were for doing it ahead of time, it feels like it's something that can be.
Yeah, sorry if I, I should, I should, you're right, I should have clarified. I don't anticipate that, anticipate this for calendar year twenty three. Uh, but more for calendar year twenty four.
That's helpful. Okay.
My mistake.
Very good, thank you. And you're getting busier.
Yes.
Yes. Right. Anybody have any additional questions for Daniel? Daniel, thanks very much.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item E one point five. For highway, oh, there he is. You're in the dark there. Hi Luke.
I'm always in the dark. Luke Maston, highway supervisor. Yes, this additional item is related to the I sixty nine utility casing. Uh, those of you that were here last year will remember that the county coordinated with NDOT. To have what is now an empty casing installed under I sixty nine. That would be available for future utilities to use owned by the county. The uh appropriation for this, the county would pay for the work. The appropriation was actually made last year. This was originally envisioned to be done under a standard NDOT utility agreement. After some review by NDOT of that agreement, they felt that an interlocal agreement. Uh, was better suited to what we were doing here. So that's what this item is. Essentially, not changing the scope of what we did, not changing the dollar amount that's already been appropriated. But changing the agreement to an interlocal agreement, which does require both council and commissioner approval.
Eagle, have you had a chance to review?
Yeah, we're good with this. It's really just a form over substance change. So uh, we don't have any concerns with. The wording and the interlocal at all.
Move to proof. Motion by John Didmers.
Second.
Second by Ron Dear. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item two. So uh, I have put together, I hope. Uh, what is some, some useful information as the council considers. Uh, both new capital projects, building projects that have been discussed and those costs as well as. Uh, related to the road projects that we discussed at length last year. Um, and ultimately passed the edit to help complete. So I I will caveat this with a couple of things. One, I hope what I'm providing is is what that, what you're looking for. Um, if it's not, please let me know, but these are just some general numbers that I was able to put together. So you have a PowerPoint, don't worry, it's not that long. But uh, to hopefully help show some of these figures uh and walk through them, as well as some handouts. So probably the biggest caveat, and you'll hear several here, is that the Lit Correctional Rehab Fund. Fund one, two, three, three is not a fund that I oversee. I'm somewhat familiar with it just because it was part of our overall uh income tax rate conversations. Uh, as we discussed the edit last year. So what I provided is very rudimentary. As far as the correctional rehab lit is concerned, I don't have any personal knowledge of. Potential projects or potential additional appropriations. These are just based off the numbers that were available to me. So for a little bit of background, in two thousand and twenty three. Expenditures that were in the general fund in the twenty twenty two budget. But were eligible to be paid from Fund one, two, three, three, were moved to Fund one, two, three, three. To provide some general fund money as a supplement towards Smith Valley Road and other road projects. Supplementing that edit rate that was approved. The.
Was that done during council?
Yes. Yes, that was done, uh, final budget adoption. So. The, an original uh. Purpose of that lit correctional rehab rate and fund was to pay the debt service. Uh, payments for the jail expansion project. Uh, the council actually chose a funding mechanism to uh help uh pay that project off early. So at the bottom of this slide is just a total of the remaining debt service payments towards the jail expansion. That uh are needed out of that Fund one, two, three, three. Next slide. So this slide is a, an estimate of what the end of twenty twenty three cash balance might be. In that correctional rehab lit Fund one, two, three, three. Started the year with about sixteen million dollar cash balance. Estimated revenue, and this will be actual revenue in the way that these income tax revenues are calculated and dispersed by the state. Will be about eleven million dollars and the current budget, excuse me, current. Budgeted for twenty twenty three at the beginning of twenty twenty three was fourteen million dollars in expenditures. So an estimated cash balance at the end of twenty three of about thirteen million dollars. That is about two point nine million less uh from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Now, that does assume two things. One, that every dollar that was budgeted. Four twenty three is expended. Obviously, we know uh people leave, people. Are hired, there, the odds of one hundred percent of those dollars being spent are probably pretty low. But that also assumes that there are no requests or approved additional appropriations. And if there are, that would just lower that cash balance at the end of the year. So. That's everything I know about the correctional rehab.
One question.
Okay.
Do you have plans for any of those funds in your budget?
Plans?
Yes.
I would have plans for all of them, but uh those correctional rehab lit dollars are restricted. And what they can be spent. So as much as I would love to spend them, uh, they are not eligible for any highway related expenditure.
Okay. You, you don't have any plans for highways going through the new correctional facility?
I've not been told of any yet.
Okay.
Uh, so next slide, little more in my wheelhouse. Specifically discussing the Smith Valley Road project. So the funding for this project, as I mentioned, uh, as of right now, is a combination of the. Uh, new edit revenue and the a dollar amount for twenty twenty three, four million dollars. That was made available in the general fund by moving some of the eligible expenses I mentioned earlier into that Fund one, two, three, three. So roughly eight point four million dollars um is what is is appropriated for Smith Valley Road. Smith Valley Road, obviously, as we discussed last year, is our first priority project. We have currently divided it into two contracts or phases. Uh, I will touch on this in a little bit. Uh, but for now, that's how we are looking at the project and our cost estimate. Uh, we are still using that fifty five million dollar cost estimate that we discussed last year. As we get further into design, we'll be able to drill that down um into. What we would consider estimates that we'll be more comfortable with.
So that fifty five million dollars is more than Smith Valley Road?
No, that is Smith Valley Road.
That was in the report last year.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, but you're also saying intersections at Morgantown Road and Morgantown to Reston. Is that not part of this?
That is part of it. So Smith, think of of that fifty five million total as everything. That needs to be done to Smith Valley Road, which would include the improvement of the major intersections as well.
Yeah, okay, all right. I'm with you.
Doesn't include any non-Smith Valley Road projects, excuse me.
Contiguous.
Correct.
Luke, uh, how far east does that come from the interstate?
It will go, uh, it will start. It will go, it will start just east of Molinex Road. That's where NDOT is, is building around about there. So we'll start there and move east to the intersection of Reston Road, which is right there by the back entrance to Home Depot. And then NDOT is, has an intersection project under design for some at least minor improvements at the Smith Valley and one thirty-five intersection. So we'll be coordinating our east project terminus with however far west. Correct. Yeah, thanks. Between both of our projects. Yes. And this one final thing. The revenue and expense projections that I'm about to, to go through assume construction completion in twenty twenty-eight. That's pretty close to being in line with where had the county moved forward with the relinquishment agreement. Those funds would have been, federal funds would have been made available in twenty-six and twenty-seven. Realistically, construction probably would not have been completed until twenty-eight. So I'm still using that as kind of a bellwether comparison to where we might be otherwise. Now, there are several charts here. Don't worry about this, this, these are included really for your benefit and review later. Actually, I have a graph that will hopefully tie this information together. So I won't spend too much time on these. However, this, this next slide is, as I mentioned, spreading the project out into the two phases or contracts. That contract or phase one would be the western portion of the project. Contract two would be about two thirds of the project on the east side.
So are one of these one in two years, then three and four years? Or how does that break out?
It's a great segue to my next slide.
Okay.
Which essentially combines those two contracts into roughly estimated expenditure need by year. So.
For commissioners.
For the council as well. So what you'll see here on this graph, and again, on the chart that I show in a little bit. This is typical of how these construction projects work in terms of the expensive part comes at the end. Not that design isn't expensive or right away acquisition is, is an expensive, but these projects take several years to develop and when they're ready for construction, you need to have a lot of money in place so that you can forward. The next slide is just an, an estimate of revenue from all of the sources that we have identified. It'll be, it's easier to notice than on my previous slides, but for the purposes of these numbers, I stuck with current year dollar amounts. I neither tried to inflate construction costs nor tried to guess what changes we might see in increased revenue. So that's a little out of my wheelhouse. I don't know what inflation is gonna do. I would say it will continue to go up, but realistically, probably our revenue will continue to go up as well. So for now, when we're just looking at rough numbers, I used our current dollar amounts. I did not try to inflate those for future years. So on this, there is the three million dollars in twenty-two and twenty-three that was appropriated in the rainy day fund to help us start the engineering design process. And then the edit and general fund amounts assume that we are able to set the same dollar amounts towards this project in twenty-three in future years through project completion. And the next slide, I promise is the last table. This just takes the information from the previous two and calculates a cumulative surplus or deficit for each calendar year based off of the amount of revenue and amount of expenses that we're roughly estimating in each of those years. So again, those are dense tables that really included for your reference later if needed. Now, all of that information is combined on the next page, which is a graph for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-eight time period.
And this is excellent.
That had a feeling this is what you were looking for.
Yes.
So at the top of the graph, the green bars are the estimated revenue on the, the revenue table we looked at previously for each of those years. The red bars are the estimated expenses for those same years based off the previous tables. And the blue line is the cumulative surplus or deficit anticipated towards the Smith Valley Road project. It would be a, a combination of the four point four million dollars per year in edit, plus the four million dollars a year in general fund. And then obviously minus whatever our anticipated expenditures are. So for the first two or three years, you'll see that that balance builds pretty significantly. But that's mainly because it has to. Once we really get rolling into construction in twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven, we will spend that balance down pretty quickly. Based off of, again, the, these rough numbers we have at the moment, we would be about two million dollars short in twenty twenty-eight of completing Smith Valley Road. I'm not too concerned about that because that's pretty far out at the end of the project. If we did end up being a little bit short, there are ways that we can make that work as far as construction scheduling and shifting some of those costs into the next year. But just for the purposes of this exercise, we would be just slightly short of what we need by the end of twenty-eight. So last side, slide is just a summary. The with the debt service payments and assuming that the same dollar amounts are budgeted in the one, two, three, three fund, the correctional rehab lit, the overall cash balance would be on pace to drop. As I touched on previously, about three million dollars this year, three million dollars next year, and just a little bit about three hundred thousand and twenty-five. At that point, those debt service payments roll off. And that fund, again, assuming the expenditures and the revenues stay consistent, would be about two and a half million dollars in the green roughly each year. And as I touched on, Smith Valley Road, at least based on these early estimates, would be just shy of what's needed for completion in twenty-eight. But again, it's still very early and we'll nail those costs down as we move forward. The only other caveat is I, I kind of went through what my assumptions are here. These are best case scenarios, assuming nothing changes. Obviously, revenues may increase, expenditures may increase. There may be requests for additional appropriations. A lot of those things I can't predict, so they're not really calculated in here. I would, I would take these numbers as just rough general numbers at this point.
So any questions? Good, good presentation. Scary as hell.
No, I, I was good presentation. Thank you for this.
And I, it's not your wheelhouse to have done it, but the one thing that is not included in that is potential community correction a debt for community correction facility.
Correct.
Yeah.
As I understand, and anyone feel free to correct me, but as I understand the council's original intent with that rehab and correctional lit was to essentially pay the jail off pretty quickly and then be in a position, hopefully, to mostly or fully fund future capital projects like community corrections with the cash balance that was in there.
Yeah, that's correct. There, there is one item that might be helpful to the three new counselors. You provided us a whole lot of information last year. Talking about how many years it would take for us to, to get some of this work done, including Smith Valley. It might not be a bad idea to forward that to the new counselors.
Yeah, absolutely. I spent a lot of time on it. I'm happy to.
Well, that.
Share it with anyone.
Just this last, or the cash flow graph, I call it. That, that's, these, these are the types of things that are really visual. Help me really quickly. Help, I think it helps everybody understand. That's the next to the last page. But there are several things, you know, you didn't consider in your, in some of your numbers in that. There are a lot of expenditures right now that are going towards that lit for, for the correctional facility that are operational.
Yeah.
So there's almost like seven million dollars annually coming out of that. So that, that's affecting those numbers too. So I have a, you might want to stick around. I have some things from Mike Reuter. You know, that kind of addresses that at the end. So. Anybody have any questions? Pam, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Luke.
How's your beverage?
It's waiting on me.
Luke, thank you very much. Good work, a lot of hard work. All right. So these next two things, I want to, item E two. If you had that, those actually data sheets or spreadsheets in front of you from Mike Reuter. And this is in the line of Luke's in, in that, in that this stuff is preliminary. So please bear with me on it, but I, I just wanted to make some general statements. Okay, let's look at the edit fund first. So all of that money for the edit for this year has been appropriated. And it's gone, it's going to highway. And essentially that, that edit fund is gonna remain that way though, all, all through. So I think for us to be thinking in terms of the edit, we're gonna need some help from our commissioner on some thoughts on that. But my thought, and I want to share this with you, is that these funds that are being collected for that edit, the tax dollars might be better spent on a bond issue. And Commissioner, would you like to come up and talk about it a little bit? So what my point was, you know, maybe perhaps, you know, these collections are this edit goes mainly to us, but there is a large chunk of it that goes to surrounding communities like Greenwood. I think it's close to three million this year. So those things are gonna increase for those communities to, to be able to handle some of the stuff we're doing, you know, that's gonna be contiguous with what we're doing for them. But what's your thought on that?
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. Thought on overall bond repayment or?
I mean, future bond issuance for this, if we, if we borrowed money and we, our debt is really in fine shape right now. We're one of the lowest counties as far as debt in the state. So we have an excellent credit rating and I don't perceive there being anything in that regard, but I just, my thought on it is to get bond counsel involved with this early on. And utilize this money that's coming in from the edit to make the bond payment. Thereby, we're, we're not reducing the overall picture that Luke presented. You know, he has, he has, you know, a huge surplus of funds going up there, which really isn't the case. You know, that surplus is not nearly what that's going to be. So and the other thing that's feeding into this is our need to provide a new community corrections facility. Then that goes back to this lit fund or the jail lit. That is, in, in essence, about the same condition. We have a lot of cash balance in there. And that cash balance could be making the payment towards and, and almost immediately. I think I thought at the end of this year would be around a nineteen million dollar cash balance. But looking at Mike's projections here, he's, you know, he's projecting out some of the same expenses and Mike's, Mike's a very good conservative analyst. So I think the number he has here, we need to be very we need to study. But if you notice, the cash balances on the top. My thought is that these, these funds are being collected, these tax dollars are being col- collected for a specific purpose. And that is to go towards a correctional facility or a rehab facility. It's called correctional facility slash rehab facility lit. So we collect that dollar, it should be going towards that. And it's right now that I believe these funds are kind of languishing. And they could be really applied almost immediately if we can find that way, that method. The, the problem we have with this jail lit is that the, the bond for that jail addition doesn't drop off until January of twenty-five. But when that drops off in January twenty-five, there's gonna be a lot of funds that are gonna be available to make whatever we need to go forward with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, basically it sounds to me like you need to put together this whole list and get it in Reuter's hands and let him kind of steer that boat a little bit. And say yes, no, how do we wanna bond it? Or do you wanna try to cash it? How do you wanna do it? And that would be his, how much reserve you wanna keep in case, because there could be a downturn in the economy.
Yes.
You don't wanna spend it at the peak. You wanna put some of it away. But you know, a lot of the correctional you did say is correct. It needs to stay, you know, in that line item. You know, I know we've got some huge road issues.
Yeah. I mean, this is excellent.
Yeah, I mean, it is. And that's, he's only showing me fifty-five million of a three hundred billion dollar project.
Right. So there you go.
There's, there's a lot more coming. There's just a lot of needs. So I think you need to look down the road, maybe ten, fifteen years and put this package together and see what it looks like over that term. Is it a long-term bond, short-term bond? What are the rates? How much do you need? What do you wanna get? You know, there, there's a lot of questions that I can't answer.
Yeah, that's, but some of these pieces are coming together. And we're getting very close to the community corrections facility, being able to define some things so we can go to design development and then get to a number that's gonna be a firmer number rather than just throwing a number out there.
We, well, we engaged crossroads engineering today in the commissioners meeting for top graphical, top graphical and I think survey land, survey best use for that land. We, we engaged that today. So this thing is moving forward. We got the sheriff's training center. It'll be back part of that. Highway is gonna get revamped. We've got the gas, you know, the fuel station is gone now. Tanks, everything's gone. Just waiting on some results. You've got community corrections. You've got a new salt barn that's being moved, which I think we've got through that through ARPA funding. So there's been a other avenue of revenue that we've utilized. But that's a big complex over there and I think we're gonna best utilize it. But as far as the total dollar amount, I don't know what that is yet. And I won't. So it's hard for me to sit here and say, yeah, we're going to spend twelve million when it could be sixteen million. I don't, I don't know.
Or thirty.
I don't think it'll be thirty. Well, I can guarantee you it won't be thirty for the correctional facility. So.
Okay. And, and is, are we currently in the process of doing a needs analysis for a structure?
Yes, there, there's a study going on. Commissioner West is heading that up right now. So he is the one that's working on that. I think he's been with you on some tours, some different facilities and with the architect or the designer has been with him on this and has traveled. And, you know, they're just trying to put the best plan together they can. I think we're. And, you know, they're just trying to put the best plan together they can. I think we're eighteen thousand square feet. You compare that to the fire station, we're just moving the fire station. It's twenty-two thousand square feet. So.
Well, thank you, sir.
I don't know if I answered anything.
Yes, you did. And, and that, and this discussion is one that we need to have. And I know we talked about a joint meeting between the council and, uh. Commissioners at some point in time in June. And maybe we have Mike Reuter in during that period of time and maybe we have that.
I think I would give Mike projections out in front. So he comes to the meeting, we don't stare at each other.
Yeah.
Guess and assume, uh, I would get, you know, dollar amounts put on all these different projects, including highway. You know, put it all together. It's going to be a big number. Put it together and just see what the best course forward is. So.
What's your thought on, uh, Indiana Bond Council or Indiana Bond Bank?
I have never dealt with them, so I really couldn't.
Okay. Well, I wondered about having them engaged right now also because, uh. We're getting close to the time when we're going to have to do something for Smith Valley. Correct? Yeah. Uh, Luke's standing up there like he's got somewhere to add. Behind you there.
I'm not going to give him the mic because you're here for another twenty minutes. I know better.
I think he had a glass back there that, that he got through, uh.
Just real quick, uh, you reminded me of a couple of things and I promise this won't take very long. The, in terms of bonding for Smith Valley Road, I think one of the interesting. Results of, of where we were with these numbers is that we are in a position. Where we can pay for Smith Valley as we go, so long as we start saving money now. We wouldn't necessarily have to bond to complete it. The way that the, uh, as I mentioned, it takes. Time to develop these projects. We're going to have to acquire right of way, some utilities, all of the utilities will have to move. Some of them we will have to pay to move. All of that has to happen before we get to construction. So. The timing just happens to work out for Smith Valley Road to where we could pay as we go. As long as we remember that those dollars that we're saving need to be saved for that project. One thing that I did not mention was the rest of the projects on that list. So as we get better cost estimates on Smith Valley Road, as we work through our design, as we get. To appraisals for right of way, we get a better handle on exactly what that total is going to be. Ideally. When I'm in a position where I'm comfortable that we have or will soon have enough money to sminish, finish Smith Valley. Then we will likely be coming forward to talk about. At least getting started on some of the rest of those projects as well in terms of design. So we could still have, uh, you know. A big chunk of, of contract two, let's say, that is under construction or. Will soon be under construction, but we have enough revenue to fund it. Then it was time to start looking towards getting those, rest of those projects started. What, what time that will happen? I don't know.
But see, that's what I thought, you know, given that, you know, you're just looking at Smith Valley. You showed that graph for just Smith Valley.
Yes.
And incorporating all the funds in the county and. We're not. I think the, the bond floating a bond would enable us to walk and chew gum at the same time where you'd be able to do. Some of those other projects, you know, at the same period of time that are in just as much need. You know, uh, other than just the I sixty-nine impact.
Right.
But.
I agree one hundred percent. That would obviously be the benefit of bonding that money is that. Not only is the dollar amount we need for Smith Valley ready when we need it, but we can start sooner. Even if it's just starting design or right of way acquisition on some of those other projects, that's huge. And that's the, that's where you have to start if you want to move forward.
And I, I think that maximizes the, uh, the way that we're using edit. If we were able to do that and we would make a bond payment with the edit, uh, funds. Because they are, you know, when the correctional facility lit comes in, it's a much greater number. Because it doesn't have the other communities coming out of it. We, we have that. And we're, we don't have those other funds going out like the edit does. So the amount we have coming in from the edit is much smaller, almost half.
It's about forty percent.
Yeah.
So I, for every one percent of edit rate, the county receives forty percent of that revenue. For every one percent of the, uh, correctional rehab rate, the county receives one hundred percent of that revenue. They're not for the same use, but that potentially provides some flexibility, especially when coupled with the general fund.
I know you have a catalog in you up there that you have these numbers, but last year presented a report to us how many years it would take us. If we didn't have a plan, what was that?
Uh, I, none of us would be alive. I don't remember.
Well, Ron West would be alive.
That's true. Yeah. Out of spite, yeah. I don't remember, but if, if, I mean, it, it was nothing that would provide benefit that. Any of us or any of the people we currently serve would see.
I remember twenty ninety-six or something like that. It was, was way out there.
Very well could be, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, so that, I believe, uh. So you see the reason, uh, we need to discuss this, I think. Got some big numbers coming at us and.
So what's next? That's what's blowing around my mind is, is this a Mike thing to come in and kind of, because you, you raised a compelling point, John. But from his perspective, what makes the most sense from a use standpoint versus a funding standpoint? Uh, and now what we can't pay him to do is, is kind of give us some options. We don't have to do what he suggests, but.
He's talking about Mike Reuter.
Mike Reuter.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And I guess what you mentioned, maybe the next step is a June joint meeting or something to get his feedback.
We have him scheduled to come in in June twelfth. So, uh, he will be here, but. I would really like to have it, you know, I'll talk with commissioners about this to see if, uh. We need to have that joint meeting with Mike Reuter in it and, uh, who else, who else we also need to have in there. But I think it, I think it'd be a very valuable meeting to have us all in there together to be able to collaborate. And know what's in each other's minds about this.
Now, John, for your information, what Mike Reuter traditionally does. In the absence of, of what we're discussing here is he comes in and makes a. Presentation about what he believes we're going to be able. To, to fund in particular categories and what increases would have to take place and. Could we conservatively handle three, four, five, ten percent increase, whatever, salaries? Uh, hope I didn't say ten percent, but, uh, you know, that's what he does with, this is separate.
This would be projects, I mean, this would be project oriented.
Yes, yeah, separate from that.
Yeah.
Thank you. And these were prepared by Mike.
Yes, I thought.
Okay. So is there any other? Further discussion to be had at this time? Do you want me to? Talk with, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Chairman and see if they want to have that meeting or. Can you tell me yes right now? You want to have that meeting?
That was yes.
No, that was, I'm one, I'm one guy.
Gotcha.
Well, we can invite one of all three and then whoever shows up is, uh.
Again.
Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. I would agree to the meeting. With the understanding that we do have information given to the right people with the right information to come back to us. And have a legitimate meeting instead of all of us, ten people sitting around a table and throwing theories out.
So the main reason for this meeting is Mike Reuter.
Yeah. And I think if we get him information, if you sit down and just brainstorm and just say. XXXXX, here's what total bond and here's how we need it, want to divide it out. Then let him give you the answers or yeah, you can or no, you shouldn't, or you should wait, or you can use some of these funds for this. He would be a better directional guidance, I think, in this meeting than the ten of us.
Oh, absolutely.
But I, I would agree, I would agree to it. If we have that information, do him and let him have some time to formulate. And come back to us with an actual. Vision and a plan.
So tentatively speaking, June twelfth.
I'm on, yes.
Okay.
Well, what were we going to discuss before Mike was involved?
Same thing, but I really wanted to, that it's imperative. That he puts it together in your financial package for the well-being of the county down the road. He's going to forecast well, he's going to give you good guidance. And we talked about having bond counsel with him when he came in. That would be, you know, and it, there's, there's numerous firms that do that. So. That would be a wise choice, I think, and it would put everybody on the same page.
Would you be opposed? I think that, uh. Indiana Bond Bank would be a good, uh. Starting point to just talk to them and they would be, uh, how do I want to say it?
Resource.
Yeah, a good resource and then maybe not so much a, uh. A one way or the other. Type of, uh, council. So if I, if council, if council would allow me to do that, I'll contact Indiana. On pain. To come into, or, and we'll talk to them first beforehand too.
Yeah, see if they have anything to offer that, you know, how it would fit into our particular.
Yeah. I think the others people that I've talked to about this is the, you know, it's, we're investing funds at the Indiana. For Indiana to withdraw from. So I think it's kind of a good thing all the way around in that regard. But on the other side of that coin is. Private enterprises. We want to, you know, support our local. Banks or whatever, and that may be.
It's might be out of the bank league.
Yeah.
It's going to be, you're going to have to go bond. It's not going to be a bank. I don't think you're going to, any bank finances.
Right.
I mean, Mr. Divers could probably speak.
John, I have a question on what we're trying to accomplish with bring, would be premature to bring the, the, uh, Indiana, uh.
Bond bank.
Bond banks, and thank you, uh, bring them in before we kind of have. What we're trying to accomplish with Mike and the commissioners. I'm trying to think through that a little bit on timing. I think you're right, but I'm wondering about timing, so.
Yeah, I think Mike can maybe give us a better, and, and good point. I'll talk to Mike Reuter to see if it's even, uh, something that we need to do at this point in time. Looking at you. Old wise one.
What? Look, somebody's going to come talk. No, I, that, you just need to get down what your list is of funding. You've got, you've seen Luke's. You know, we can get close on community corrections. You know, sheriff's going to have training center coming in. There's a lot of different projects that are going on now. In the county. We just need to really put a whole hit list together and see what rises to the top.
So this is kind of, maybe I should know this, but I don't. The whole hit list consisting of what? And is that list prioritized? Or is it just a?
I would just compile the list and we can prioritize.
That's not been done yet, is my, okay.
Everybody, that's why I said theories are flying all over the place and it just needs to be honed in.
Maybe i- it's part of this, I mean, we talk about a five-year capital improvement plan. Go from there. I think we, I think that's probably going to be the precedent.
If we're kind of road, we, we passed one of those the commissioner about last year. So from a road standpoint, we're with Luke to get that list ready, but it's capital improvement like. Buildings, that's what's on probably to show down on.
Yeah.
Cause, yeah, highway is a different animal.
So you have a, a five-year capital improvement plan on the highways?
Yeah, we, we worked with, I don't know if it was a five-year. Land issue required. You also have to have. Yeah, so we, we met the such requirements on, on that. So the big one was Smith Valley, but there was a Morgan County road.
You got Morgantown, you've got numerous arteries.
To the council for your review, obviously.
So how do I get this information? Does it all come through Adam? Or do I? Send out an email to all, have you send out an email to all departments?
I would just send it to the stakeholders. You got ten people I would send it out to and, and just compile the information that everybody puts together. That's where you're going to have to start.
Plus for the attorney.
And then you can filter it through Adam, Adam and Tiffany if you want to. So.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm waiting for an adjournment before I walk.
No, I've got one more items to go on. But he can probably go home. I'm going to call you up for this one. So the next item I want to talk to, and thank you very much for taking time this evening, all of you. Pam, thank you very much for taking time out of your vacation to do this. So.
Lot of problems.
Okay, what we've got in front of us now is we've got this budget information for twenty twenty-four. And really I just wanted you to, I, I also ran this in front of, uh. Mike Reuter and he agrees with the, going ahead initially with the, the two percent and five percent. So that, under the council requests. So what we would do at this point in time is send this letter out to the, uh. Elected officials and department heads for, and it would be a, uh, starting point. For all accounts that begin with two, three or four would be five percent an adjustment up. And as a starting point for all accounts that begin with one, which is essentially the salaries, uh, that would be three percent initially. And hopefully this will be done in a manner that they'll may be able to make, uh. Some good decisions about. What would be easy for them to change this number if need be, but. This come, this information and a lot of the information that I put in here, I used the Biden authorship. Method of plagiarizing from another county. And Amy provided that to me, so we'll have to credit them with some of this information. But Amy, you've done a nice job on this and auditor's office. Thank you very much for all this information. So we've got a lot of information in here to mull over if you'd like to take time to take just a minute here to. Go through some of it. But what I'd like to do, uh, uh, you know, at the end of your perusal is to say, yeah, let's go ahead.
So John, um, let me ask this. So we're not. Taking from the council like we have in prior years. A emotion with a second, we're just going to tell people it's five percent.
Yes.
Okay.
This letter will be their instruction and, and I view this as being preliminary because we'll have a lot of information coming in. You know, the legislative session will change some things. Mike Reuter will have some additional information for us. We'll also have COLA information, you know, where the cost of living adjustment will be. Coming in and it'll be closer to the fact. During, you know, coming months, so that may adjust up. But who knows? It's a little bit like a crystal ball at this point in time, but I think this, uh, bulletin. That we're sending out gives us the ability and gives them the instruction that, hey, you can do this. And put this in, it, it kind of get, it's going to give us a better knowledge of where we are. Uh, at the end of this and what our abilities are and what the desires of council are going to be.
But a clarification of what Linda just said. The proposal on here, the three percent, uh, potential salary increase. And I, I don't know if I'm comfortable in the council not saying in a vote manner. That they support three percent or two percent or five percent or whatever the figure might be. I don't think we should just put a memo out. I think when you get to this point, we need to have a vote and a discussion on that, how the others feel.
Accounts, three and four, what are those accounts covered?
They're all accounts with the exception of salary.
Oh, all other accounts.
Those are budget operational accounts and.
Okay.
And it's a limitation adjustment of no greater than five percent.
Right.
I, I have contended for my two years on the council that simply because you have. That simply because you had a budget of X amount of dollars in those categories next year. And you've got a thousand fifteen hundred dollars with a paper sitting in. The corner, you don't need to add another fifteen hundred, maybe you had a cost base. Budgeting, uh, but this is a no greater, and then the amount is convenient for, uh. Salary is three percent. Up to three percent.
And that, you know, doing my own research, that's where the current COLA is. Is that three percent? No, that's just based on what. I have been able to determine, now that can change and it could come from another source, but you're all welcome to, you know. Delve into that, but that's the reason why I'm throwing out this out here is we have a limited amount of time before the budget. For these people to prepare their, their budgets for us. And I wanted to start somewhere, this comes with the approval, or not the approval of. But the agreement of Mike Reuter that this is a good place to start.
Um, can, um, I like your letter, can we also, I was wondering if we could also add to the letter. In that sentence, it says during the first reading, please give a brief explanation, Rick, in a written document. What are you referring to on that? What's the written document? Is it just the actual budget itself?
So the written document is, did we eliminate that? Maybe, I think we may have.
Says during the first reading, please give a brief explanation or a document highlighting the service to our community that we provided.
I think that, uh, should probably, cause last, last two years, we've had. The mental health committing and make a presentation that lasted. At least twenty minutes, so. If we could put a time limit.
Five minutes.
Of no more than five minutes.
And Ron, this is, that's your, this is to do this to have people.
Well, I I think it should be not done at budget time, but that was the discussion we had last week for those of, last year, for those who are on council, I propose that. Each department would have a five, ten minutes at the, at our routine council meetings. And we'd have two departments, uh, and it would be up their choice whether they choose to make a presentation because. We review over ninety five budgets, we simply don't have the time to hear. A dog and pony, and I think we need to hear that dog and pony, but not a budget time.
Well, I I mistook you then, I thought that that's what you were requesting.
I think we need to hear it.
Should we just eliminate it here then, from the letter? Okay.
Okay, so, but I still think to keep the mental health department. From taking more time than really away from other people, I I still think that we. Need to prepare the departments that they have a time limit.
And you've added that, right, Amy, you're going, can you please? All right.
I did have a question on the written statement including. Number of employees by position with a brief described job description will. In some departments that brief described job, the job description. Maybe. Ten employees have that, so it's one described job description for the ten employees is what I understand you're suggesting.
Yes, so in the instance of like a correctional officer, a CEO, there's a hundred of them. But just one job description. And that's what I'm after, cause when we make our changes to a line item. Of, or a position, then we need to have in our mind how many of those are affected.
And then the second item, projected twenty twenty four number of employees by position with a brief job description. That is the same thing as. Twenty twenty three, but any additional job positions that they're suggesting. Uh, is what I think you're asking there. Is that correct?
Cause what I'm looking for is a net change. So that if they're anticipating hiring ten more people. We need to know how many it was and how many it's going to be.
Alright, so that perhaps might be rewarded, uh, projected increase in number of employees by position. Cause what you, that's what you're looking for, it's a net increase, correct?
And why?
Yeah.
And why?
Yeah. And do our people currently compute turnover rates, Amy?
That's one request.
Yeah, I understand that.
I put that.
But do they, anybody compute that right now? Not to know.
I think the sheriff's department does, and I think the larger departments do. If they, you know, if they've lost so many deputies to adjacent or. Like communities, they know that. And if they can't get people, they're trying to hire them and they can't get that person, we need to know that, so. And that change is important, I think.
Well, I would suggest that we take a vote on this at our next meeting.
I would, you know, on all due respect, I think we need to get this out as much, as early as we can. Now, there are a couple other things I wanted to talk about. So the pre procedure on job descriptions and it's highlighted down here at the very bottom. Right now, we have no procedure for jobs description change and who that goes to. We had discussion at the last meeting about Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. Uh, W I S about whether we're moving forward with them. My recommendation to council is that we go forward with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy for the purpose of. Uh, job descriptions changes. Because right now, the the issue we have is when some, when that change needs to take place, we don't have anybody to review that. Or am I mistaken in saying that? Is there someone? That is doing that currently? Handling job descriptions, there is none, so my, my. My thought is that council. Goes ahead with Wagner, Irwin and Shealy. To do that. And I'm also gonna go back to the well on the person in the auditor's office. Uh, that I think that would be a great aid to help the auditor's office to help council. You know, it took a long time, you know, I was just shocked at how long it took me to just get to the bottom of this. And of course, Amy, when he put her, she put her revisions on it, she probably spent just as much time on it. But these things take a lot of time for us, and I think the the more help we can get. And Amy is really taxed in her position, you know, with the auditor, and I think I've talked with everybody about that, that. She has this timeframe where she's hitting all of these state board of accounts numbers and. And then we're coming in here asking her for things and. Quite honestly, there's a lot more that I, that I would like to have a person doing about salaries about. You know, all the things that, all the questions that we might have, so I'm gonna go back to the well one more time on that. And. I'm gonna ask that council consider going head forward with, uh, now. If we say that we're in favor of that, then there's on top of that. There's all these other people that have to buy into this too, all the other elected officials, all eighteen elected officials. And the commissioners, the three of them and all eighteen of the departments that they have under them. So for these personnel or these job description changes, they need to go to this person. I'd like to hear some discussion on that. One for the, for the, for the position in the auditor and one for Wagner or when is she?
I I think that we're kicking the can down the road. If we don't act now, i- i- this is gonna be something that's gonna have to be done, and we've been talking about that, about this for months. And. Budget time is so taxing. On all of this, but I can't even imagine what it's like for Amy. Um, I don't want her to have to take on into more, I wanna help relieve. Your duties, I think we're gonna have to move forward. I. I kinda have a hard time with. Pushing the whole. Job description to outsiders. Who don't have skin in the game and who don't. Understand what it's like being on the frontline. I, I mean logically, you can think about jobs and think, well, this person should be able to do this and this and this, but. Until you're doing it, it's a different story. I see it in healthcare all the time, we get, you know. Administrators telling us how to do our jobs, but. You know, it's just, it's not as easy as what they make it out to be, they've not, they've never done the job, so. I don't have, I ha- have issue with that.
Yeah, and the, the only thing I did, I failed to mention is. It has been said that I shouldn't have been making this presentation, it should have been done by the auditor's office or the auditor. And the reason I, I disagree with that is because this is one of those things that no one entity controls. No one, uh, elected official or no one. Uh, department head has that, uh, state statute telling them that they have to do this. So I think the reason I'm getting involved with this, cause I, I just think that somebody needs to get the ball rolling. And then all these other elected officials and all other department heads need to buy in. That's where I'm coming from. And I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
No, it's okay, I was pretty much done anyway.
Councilor Burton?
Yes.
You have a great deal to offer on this.
Yep.
What do you think?
I'm just gonna tell you that I would support your current auditor in any decisions that she feels the need to hire an additional employee. And whatever services that she requires that person to do, I as a council member will support any work that she chooses to do for our department. But as far as me having any input on the direction of what direction she should go. I'm going to recuse myself from that because I think it's outside our purview, so. But I will support our auditor and any employees that she chooses to hire, and if she chooses to. Place responsibilities on things that are coming toward the council, I will support that work one hundred percent.
Councilor dear?
Well, we're, we're talking about two different wellhouses, in my opinion, about this before. And one is the position assisting, but the, the other is the process. Uh, that you, well, that we've just bounced around since this current council has been in place and we've bounced it around. For two years before that, and that, and we had. Irwin associates doing part of at that point in time, and that was. When a position is changed, when a position is created. That it goes through a process and that's totally, not totally different is part of this discussion. And who is that process and what are they doing, uh, and are they analyzing? Whether or not it's done, has been ranked properly, and I think we're going down two different discussions, and maybe I'm wrong.
There is two different discussions.
And then the second one, it would be in the. Auditor's office that would be providing assistance in gathering information. That is often needed by the council, it is a burden for. Not a burden that she doesn't accept, but is a time burden for Amy that we could, uh. You know, have that individual being assisting the council in that realm and I. I don't have much of a problem with that, uh, but I just think that it needs to be defined as to what they would do. Now, if they were the gatekeeper for. The process that says we want to increase the salary. And they have to go through the forms process, that's one thing, but they would have no authority to be able to say, this is the analysis. And I think that's where we, we, we bump ourselves up against the, the corner when we get to that. Who's to do that, and right now it's, correct me, Barb is doing some of it, has done some of it in the past, Adam.
Barb is the, uh, is the commissioners. Administer executive assistant, and so she is just with the commissioners.
No, but she's been doing this in the past.
I think that the, the issue. That we just keep circling for five months at this point is what is the process? So if, if the auditor is gonna hire someone, which is her purview, so she hires someone to not be a gatekeeper, but essentially say. For your direction, we want X process done prior to. Department head or another elected official coming. To this body, say, I would like a new position, I would like a raise, I would like a job description change, except whatever it may be. I think my sense is that role would just be to compile the documents, the information. To then present to this body, so not gatekeeping the treasurer or the animal shelter or the sheriff from doing anything, it's just look, if you want. An increase of any kind, you need to provide X, Y and Z to then be presented to the council, is that correct?
Yes, and they need to have, everybody in the, in the county works underneath an elected official. So the bottom sign off on that is that elected official needs to be a part of that and before it goes to council.
I agree, I, the process really, you've mentioned other departments buy in, I mean. That's true, but at the end of the day, this is the body that makes this decision, so if you all want to require. Certain information. You can just say this is the process that you need to go through in order to get the approval of this body. Does that make sense?
Well, and example tonight, and there's no other examples, the prosecutor requested five, five thousand dollar bump in a salary. Uh, there was another recommendation by. Someone in the commissioners meeting. Uh, about, uh, supplement, oh, it was, it was, that was, uh.
Nine one, that got.
Nine one one.
But yeah.
Yeah, now they can call supplement, but everybody's calling it an increment over and above. And you have all these different words that come out, but it's basically a bump in the salary. Because of a change in positions and who determines that that bump is appropriate and, and we make whatever decisions. When it's presented to us, but we not have a commonality in a process. So that's where you, like we're talking about, for it's been over five months of what is the process, and I've been asking for that for two years and five months now.
Well, I think that the process can be defined by this person, once this person's in, in position, you have the position, correct? So all this is just, we're not, we're not adding any dollars, we're just filling the position. And so, Ron, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think that we get this, it's kinda like bricks and mortar, you can't put a, put, hire somebody to do a task that requires bricks and mortar. This is the bricks and mortar of this job is that we need to have the, the bricks and mortar in place, which is this person. And it's hired, here's what I suggest, it's hired by the auditor because we have a hard time hiring as a group of seven. And it's underneath Amy's supervision, is that kinda what you were thinking, and I don't wanna speak for you in this regard? Yes, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Amy said.
Elizabeth said it'd be under her.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we've discussed this, first thing I wanted, wanted to do is have, have any further discussion on this budget information? I know, Ron, you've had some issue.
I just, you know, I've got a, a problem of not having a consensus of the council. And I think we need to do that in a.
Could we do that tonight?
A consensus exactly on what?
What, what, what's being, there's never been a discussion that I know of. Where there wasn't some discussion about what the potential increases would be, and I remember. James Isom's statement was always, well, it doesn't matter because nobody followed it, and then I did a study. That showed in two thousand twenty three that ninety five percent of the departments did come forward and say, we followed your forty percent. Or your four, forty percent, your four percent increase in the salary, so I think our guidance is important. But I think it has to be a guidance that we have had a consensus of the council on, now whether or not you want to. But I think it has to be a guidance that we have had a consensus of the council on. Now, whether or not you want to delay that until May. Because there's so many people not here, or two not here tonight, or if you wanna vote on it.
Well, this gets the ball rolling. Because some people plan, they plan, some people plan ahead a lot, and they need something to go on.
I agree.
So we're probably not gonna have a consensus all at one time.
Consensus doesn't mean that you have to have seven, it's a consensus of the majority there of the present.
So we could.
Ask the question.
Go ahead, Pam.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you guys are discussing. So from the letter I read, John, that I'm assuming you prepared along with Amy and others as you stated. First of all, it's an excellent letter in my opinion, and I've waited thirty years to be able to look at one of those letters. And have some input on it. Um, it, it's an awesome letter and. But it's also a liquid project at this point, because we're waiting on several numbers to come in. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, and I think that's worded such, when it's distributed to the. To the department heads and elected officials, it's a very, I, I think that is stated over and over again in here.
So you do, so you're trying to give some very wide parameters of X and Y. So they can get started on preparation for their budget. The only thing I would like to say, and this is just giving an opinion, is you are right, Mr. Dear, and I agree with you. We've heard for years, doesn't make any difference, they're gonna do what they wanna do, and, and this is proven. Often true in the past, maybe not in the numbers that you studied, but it is proven true in the past and. Unfortunately, it can all, it, it can bank a lot on how eloquent you speak. And how well you present what you're trying to say. If you're pretty good at it, you can make things happen. If you're not so good at it. Sometimes it doesn't go your, your, your way, so I like the letter, I like the way we're moving forward. And I like the talk I hear about, okay, we're gonna give you some guidelines here, we've studied these. This is what you've got to work with, and we're gonna hold their feet to the fire, that's what it's gonna be. Now, I know there's always exceptions to every rule, but for the most part, I, I commend everyone for looking to move forward. And giving some solid guidelines that can be followed by everybody in the county.
John?
Yes. Alright, I think, I, I think everything's been covered, and I think, uh, Adam, uh, his point, you, you. This lives, the, the guidance piece, it's an information, um. Source of information inside the auditor's office for people to go to to find out what we're supposed to be, that's one. I think the one thing maybe we talked about, we didn't bring it up this way, is I still think a big gap we have is this HR piece, which I think is related. But I now understand they're distinct and separate, although related. Um, and what resonated with me, John, when we talked about this, was the support for what Amy's doing. We can't just keep asking her to do more, or Elizabeth to do more without more resources, but. Uh, I think that that is almost the, uh. I guess the positive area or whatever it is for the information people need to stop with the coming in and asking for things, just kinda. Ask for changes that are almost, I'm not saying they're seat of the pants because they're justified in their view, but we're making decisions based on. The trust we have and then to what you made earlier, and I kinda struggled with that. So I think we're, we're on the right track.
And, and the one thing that happens in particular about salary increases is not to belabor it, but the, the consultant. Could come in and tell us that we can, we could. Do a five percent increase, and then we have a discussion about whether or not we should. Uh, you know, I have been for a long time saying that we should have these, this information to them sooner than later. And I'm not disagreeing with that portion of it, I'm simply saying, we've, as a council, have had no discussion to whether or not. That three is reasonable. Last year it was, uh, eight point five percent potential increase for salaries. And then we had all kinds of adjustments that were made and, and a formula, and it was just, uh. You know, a very convoluted way we went about it, but, you know, I just. If we say the council suggesting three percent as a guideline, I think we ought to be. Saying yes or no. Right now, it's just, it's not a decision by the council. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So this comes at the, at the. At the knowledge of Mike Reuter, what he knows right now, what's happened in the legislative session and. It's our best guess at this point in time, and it is just a guess. It's kinda like a budget estimate. At this point in time, and if you want to be firm about this at this point in time, it's kinda like a contractor bidding. Uh, set of drawings when you're fifty percent complete. It's just not possible at this point in time, so I think this is the best.
I don't, this, this would be what they prepare the budget on. What you're saying.
Yes, they're, they're doing the initial preparation.
It's not an absolute commitment to that, it's basically, here's the first pass, it could be more, it could be less, right, on the. On the pay scales.
Yeah.
But it's a starting point, I think is where we're heading with this.
I state this twice in here.
Yeah.
This is only a starting point, as many members of the county council are reluctant. To recommend percentages or increases prior to further and more precise data being collected. That's in there twice, to the, to, in this letter.
I'm good with it myself.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so. Any further discussion? And if not, I'll.
So you wanna make a motion? I guess I, real quick, more knows, I think we're all ready to go home. Well, I get, Pam, are you comfortable with the five and three percent recommendation?
With the parameters set forth while we discussed tonight, yes, I'm comfortable with that, knowing that the numbers can change after other information comes in, yes.
Okay, so. Just as you have your consensus, at least with four of the five who are here, okay, and Commissioner Dear, I don't know.
No, I have, I'm, I was just asking for a verbal vote, but, you know, I'm not against it.
I don't think it needs to be a formal motion to approve. I mean, if there's a consensus here that this is the numbers that you're comfortable with starting. It seems to me we have that, the, my follow-up though is. With this position, you got, how do y'all wanna handle conveying to the elected officials and department heads? What this new process is gonna be for the salaries, we're kinda just vaguely pointed this position being the. The point person to go to, but.
We only.
What exactly is that standard?
We only meet one time a month, and so this, we talked about this last month. And, you know, the next month is gonna be another month. That was astounding what statement, wasn't it?
But I guess, here's the thing, I'm gonna get a phone call probably tomorrow. From elected officials, department heads, what the heck are we supposed to do? What am I supposed to tell them? Or am I supposed to tell them they're supposed to do a survey of a couple other counties, or what this average position?
I would.
Paid, like, what exactly we convey to these elected officials?
Here's what I want to do, my consensus tonight is do this and do that. And await some direction from that before you do anything.
John, if I may, to me, we green, we are green lighting the position to build. Out what you're talking about, so that can be communicated as far as what the intent is.
Ongoing conversation is being had.
Because I, I think this has gotta be built. This is a big deal, I think, as far as what we're gonna try to expect and how that's communicated to, to all department heads, elected officials, everybody, to your point.
Okay.
That, that's how I see it.
And I, I just.
So do I think, do I just ask for consensus right now with a vote, or?
I think you've had it verbally from everybody, again, it doesn't need a formal, again, this, the, the latter is a. Can be changed.
Yeah.
It's just a starting point.
So by consensus, we're going ahead and.
Going ahead with the, the additional position, which Elizabeth is. Over the, creating that, using, you have the position, you're just gonna be identifying. Oh, guess what, you gotta write a job description, who's that gonna go to?
Go forth and build this.
Fifty percent plans.
Yeah, it goes back to what I've said for the last couple of years, if we need to have a second meeting during the month to, to move the, go to the people on. Then we do it, you know, if that's what we need to do to give some guidance on this, or if we need a subcommittee or whatever. Uh, you know, if she reaches out and says, I need some information and some help, you know, that however, you know, but that's what.
Well, the county council president can call a special meeting, so, uh, if they come back to these, then we need to meet again, or call a special meeting.
John, to take a step further, I, I think that we ought to have timelines and benchmarks as far as keeping this in all rails. So that we don't sit here a month from now, two months from now, saying, so where are we on this thing? Probably I have a kind of a, a framework for a plan.
Just keep us updated.
We can do a, a special meeting, though, if you.
Absolutely.
If you need direction.
Green light, green light. If you need more, if you want us to meet earlier, we can.
So having completed the sausage. I'll entertain a motion too.
I'll make that first motion.
Motion, motion to adjourn by Melinda.
Yeah.
Second by John Dittmer, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Pam, Pam, have a drink for all of us.
Yeah.
I will. I will.
Where are you at, North Carolina?
I'm in Wilmington, Virginia.
Virginia, okay.
And thank you so much for, uh, spending some time with us, your wisdom's greatly valued.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You have a nice vacation.